We are live. It's seven o'clock.
All right. I'll call this meeting to order of the Bowling Green City Planning Commission. Appreciate all the members of the commission making themselves available tonight on such short notice. But we need to move forward on this project we've been working on. So it was, you know, pretty necessary that we have at least one meeting beyond our regularly scheduled meetings. I've been asked to instruct the people that are really to this side of Joe and to this side of Judy to be careful with the microphones. We don't have a microphone for everybody. So if you're speaking, pull the microphone towards you or lean over so that the, so that it'll show up on the record. We are not going to have any public input tonight. It's just a working session of the planning commission. I anticipate we'll probably go for an hour and a half or a couple of hours. We will have public input at our next regularly scheduled meeting on August the third. And we've passed out for the benefit of the members of commission. Heather passed out a number of documents here tonight. There are documents that are basically Abhishek's email. Very thoughtful email that he sent to all of us this morning. But I wanted to be sure everybody had a hard copy of that. We won't be getting to those things tonight because you haven't had a chance to digest it and think about it and so forth. And we're going to get some input from Nolan from Zone Co. also. But I would say that it's obvious that Abhishek put a lot of work into this. And I think all of us appreciate those efforts and the documents will be very useful to us as we move along. You also have the, the copy of the email from Will regarding the items he was interested in. That he passed on to all of us. I don't know what it's been a couple of weeks now, week or two. And along with Nolan's responses in red ink on that document. And we will hopefully get to that tonight and just go through it item by item. And then there's also a listing of the things that we voted on at our last meeting. And what was passed in terms of recommendations to city council. And we'll just keep adding to that list as we go along. With that, Saul, that comes to my mind, is there anything else I need to say, Heather? Does anybody have any questions before we start? We've got to call the roll. Jamie, everybody's here. You don't have a microphone, so everybody said here.
Through sign language, Jamie.
Anybody else have any thoughts or questions before we get started? Okay, well, we've got a little bit of an agenda for tonight that we worked out beforehand. And we'll just try to more or less follow that. So we're going to go to the use table. And we're going to first of all, go through the permitted and conditional uses for the neighborhood commercial zone and see what we, if there's anything we agree or disagree with there. I will point out again that to my mind, the name of this particular zone is confusing because it's not really located in what I consider to be neighborhoods. It's commercial areas. Some of them are but up against residential areas. But the zones themselves, if you look at the map, are commercial areas and not, not in neighborhoods. So that's what we're dealing with here. If you're thinking what's appropriate and what's not appropriate, keep in mind that we're talking about areas that are totally commercial currently. On the first page, anybody see anything they want to change? See permitted uses there are animal services, artisan manufacturing, small automobile refueling station, automotive repair garage.
Hey Bob, I have a, I have a comment that might probably derail this. I think it'd be useful to make sure we're all on the same page about what the neighborhood commercial space could be. Before we go through table. So just as an example, in our last meeting, we had discussed, I think in part based on the feedback of like whether there might be some other ways to conceptualize neighborhood commercials. They, someone mentioned the ball space to be developed. I had highlighted, I think in the meeting, and if not, I know I did after with a couple of folks here, about whether we should conceptualize neighborhood commercial, not as a backward looking industrial. So we have to preserve that quasi-industrial character. Or whether we might make it a little bit more flexible and permit on a going forward basis, like permit resident, permit mixed elements so that certain properties that are, exist today are not limited for that type of development or redevelopment. If folks are generally on board with that, I think when we go through the list, it might look really different than if just as, hey, this is, this is going to stay, you know, this is, this is next to the rail, or the old railroad, right? So it used to be industrial a hundred years ago, or we're going to preserve that industrial character.
Okay.
I don't know if anyone else has thoughts on that, whether that's.
Can I add one thing before I move forward? So again, I think Bob summarized it well. This really is a misnomer. Really, everything that was neighborhood commercial or is presented as neighborhood commercial, for the most part, was general commercial, B2 general commercial. And so when administrative staff reviewed the use table, we were really cautious about adding any residential multifamily use right on our major thoroughfares in town due to traffic especially. We really wanted to be careful where there were mixed uses and competing with downtown. And, you know, we had a similar situation where we had a rezoning request on Wooster Street that didn't meet our master plan. So we felt it was more appropriate on Clough where there already was R3. So I'm just giving you some background why we were really cautious about allowing residential there when we discussed as a staff. Certainly it's up to planning commission, but, and I wanted to jump a little bit to the IE. When you move further innovation and employment, that really became, we felt a great tool to be flexible, what you just mentioned. So the industrial and commercial uses where you could have, you know, V tech with maybe a Burger King up front or whatever, where somebody could eat and then walk back to work and forth. So it sounds like a little bit what you were describing is the IE. So just throwing it out there is a little bit of background.
Yeah, I think, I think for me, if, if we don't make it more flexible, then I do think, if we don't make the existing NC more flexible, I think we're going to have a lot of unhappy folks in the PR district. And I would suggest probably rightly so, because you are going to nail, nail down character of properties for another 50 years when I do think that a lot of that part of, if somebody wanted to take one of those buildings that's NC right now and convert that into one of the many things we talked about last. I think we, we think that would be a good idea. Or if they wanted to turn it into something with commercial on the bottom and one floor on top as residential, I think it might look a lot nicer than stuff there. And it would fit in with the residential character of that neighborhood. So if we don't make it more flexible, I do think we're going to nail it the way it is now. And you're going to permit only a certain type of business moving in there. When, to me, it seems like we want to preserve that flexibility. We add conditional uses all over the place so that there is that future development flexibility.
Thank you. Real quick, want to make sure, one, I like the concept. But I think it depends on, obviously where it's almost like, it's almost like you need to break the neighborhood commercial down into two parts. Ones that are actually in a neighborhood and ones that are more on the major thoroughfares. But so maybe that's something we can discuss. And then one quick clarification, I'm looking at this lovely map, but it doesn't have a legend on it. I want to make sure I'm looking at the right one. Is it the light or the dark pink? The man, thank you. Same color as the wall. Okay, right, my brain, just, yes, thank you.
And for me, I mean, this is going to be a call for me because of my initial comments. I have something on my agenda. I had proposed hotels as additional use because I was thinking about this zone in terms of like the, like down by six, that there's no, you know, maybe in the future somebody wants to put a hotel there. That makes sense, right? Next to Walmart, right? You know, okay. But that makes no sense.
Down there.
Near the PR. I'm so sorry.
Yeah, no, no, that's my bad. That's my bad. That doesn't make any sense up here. So my solution had been the conditional use approach so that the planning director, of course, can look at it, right? And say, okay, well, maybe a hotel makes sense down here, zone next to Walmart. And of course, it doesn't make sense in the middle of town, right? So the planning director has the discretion to veto that project. That's one way to handle it. That's an ultra flexible approach. Might not be the best approach. But that would be one way to handle it that fits within the framework that we've been given without creating a new category, a new zone, anything like that.
Yeah, I can, I mean, I see what you're, I think I see what you're saying, Will. And I know when you first said just a couple of minutes ago that you could see there being residential type uses in the NC zone, in some of the NC zones, and that would be a good thing. Like the thought that ran through my mind was whether that's a good thing or not, it depends.
Right.
Which one we're talking about.
I mean, it's, it's the areas that are right in the middle of the PR zone or the edges here, out by Maple or breweries or that.
Right.
That seems to be the ones causing the most contention, you know, about all these parts. So it makes absolute sense, north and south. But, you know, but I mean, if, if someone, one of these older buildings back in here wanted to be, somebody wanted to go ahead and convert one to some kind of residential. You know, whatever, you know, whatever it could be, then like flexibility sounds, having a flexibility sounds like a good idea.
Okay.
Let me add one more option. Again, I don't mean to interrupt. I just want to provide another perspective. A solution could be you have that PR instead of NC with the surrounding neighborhood because you still have the option of commercial and residential. To me, that seems like that tool is already drafted here and could be something that you consider.
Saying, change, suggest to change the proposed zoning to PR instead of NC.
No, the areas that you feel are more sensitive, that people brought up their concerns about that are having the surrounding neighborhood around there that's residential.
Right.
And not have the NC right in the middle.
Yeah, oh yeah, okay.
Then maybe clarify for me, the old general commercial B2. It's still encompassed some houses that were used residentially as well, correct?
I believe it does. I don't think very many, but they're currently that already. So, yeah.
When I look at the map and the zones that are, just taking a quick look at it, the zones that are NC, there's not many of them that you would want to make PR that are suited for residential use. But they're particularly the one that Joe was referencing could be a good candidate for that. I kind of like that approach.
And, and I, what, what I want to really emphasize too is not just to make it residential, but also the idea of there's, there's a lot of properties here that would be amazing, mixed use development with a, a commercial down. I mean, they have an existing multi-story footprint right now that, that's either underused, not used, or just really old, right? That looks pretty terrible, that could be redeveloped into something that has built a success. But not just to strictly delineate, well, it's got to be commercial or residential. I think that in this part of town, in theory, we, we could decide that that's a false choice, that we could permit pockets of, of both. That in my, from my perspective, that creates a more seamless residential focused footprint for a, for a commercial space versus a strictly commercial space.
So I, I, I do like the idea, but I think the way Zone Co. approached this was if it was commercial, they made it NC.
Right.
So these properties are already commercial.
Right.
Now, in that case, if that was, is true, like I think it is true, I looked at the map and kind of zoned out, look at the parcel numbers and what the addresses are and stuff like that. So a resident who's living next to the, say, a PR who's living next to the NC knows it that he or she or they are living next to a commercial. So they were aware that there's a Walmart next door, right? In that case, we're not changing the essence of that, that house per se, because there was an awareness there that I'm living and I may be living it for a choice. I want to live next to a Walmart because I can just walk there, right? So to me, the concern will be how could you reduce the negative impact, what might be of that commercial to that person? Right? So I think the approach where Zone Co. took was, how can you minimize the effect of businesses to the neighborhood? Because we kind of do all believe that businesses are important part of, are important part of community. So are housing, so are businesses, right? That's why we are proposing mixed land use. But how could we take good part of businesses and reduce the negative part of businesses, right? So noise, eyesores and stuff like that. So to me, kind, these pink, these dark NCs within the PR are that, that essence that be, right? So how could you reduce the negative impact, which the resident may already know and is facing? But how could you reduce that rather than just change? Because at some level, we are trusting that these demarcations were done methodologically, right? I haven't gone to each parcel to look what it should be, right? These done, are done by a planning commission here and they're done by Zone Co. there, and they are professionals. They do this on a daily basis. And hence to me, I rather trust them to make the judgment that this is, this was NC or this was commercial and becomes NC rather than saying, okay, we can make this NC, this PR. To me, that seems to be an haphazard approach to the, to the development.
And I will clarify though, it's actually a mix of zoning over there. There's M1 light industrial. There's B1 limited commercial and there's B4 office commercial where there's a bank currently at Wooster. So it's a mixed bag. So I just want to make sure that we correct that. And, and in fairness of Zone Co., I mean, they did the best they can using, you know, Google Maps, but they don't live here. And that's why there's a process of review of the maps. So, you know, it's really up to planning commission's recommendation and then council.
So what are our options here?
One last thing. Say we do changes to PR to NC. What if those businesses are not, not permitted now? Because there are some businesses which are permitted in NC and not in PR. Again, with this idea that there are certain businesses which are more suited for NC than for PR. So then the table really becomes what we made conditional, doesn't, or permissible, doesn't really make sense. Because now again, we are changing the, so for instance, automobile should not be there in NC. Should be not there in PR and that will be straight down.
Well, wouldn't Heather, if there was a, if there was a business that wasn't included in the permitted uses, that's already there, it's just grandfathered in.
Legal non-conforming.
It would have to be just grandfathered in.
And then, I mean, the other side of the coin is it depends what parameters you put within that district too, for some of the uses. So that's a further conversation.
So one option is to go through the permitted uses in the NC zone with the mindset that some of that could possibly be converted to residential uses as time goes on. Right, Will? Is that what you're, that's essentially what you're saying? Another, another option is to take the one particular NC zone over by Maple and Buttonwood and so forth and make it a PR zone. And to the extent that there are businesses there that don't conform to the permitted uses in the PR zone, they're, they're grandfathered. That is fair summary?
Yeah, I, I, I think I characterized mine a little bit more just as promoting flexibility within, accepting the framework that's given to me and making it more flexible. I do think another way to solve it would be to, to switch, to convert, you know, certain areas to PR and then probably, to be frank, right, probably have to go through PR again, just with that in mind, thinking about that it now includes these other, these other properties. I think for me, the idea is this isn't just going to exist today or five years from now, it's going to outlive, you know, maybe all of us, like we, we want a document that's as flexible as possible so that folks can come in and, 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 you know, update properties consistent with what they see around them. If we make it flexible so that people, it's a bit, there's a lot of conditional uses, so that the planning, there's a stop in the process, right? The planning director has the ability to say no. The planning director, you know, is, is, is terrible. Of course, that's not the case today, but some future day. There's, there's an appeals process built into that. I mean, so there, there's multiple checks.
I was going to say, there's a zoning board too, that is a, an appeal process.
Right.
That's a real roadblock to putting in
Yep.
An animal farm next door to you or something, you know.
If we go through with that mindset and allow it flexibly, do we need to add almost instruction somewhere in the code that lays that out? Says, you know, hey, neighborhood commercial, keep in mind, we want to be flexible. I don't, I don't have that language off the top of my head.
No, I, I do have thoughts on that, but I would say more than we put it into this, you would instruct the city on a X number of years basis, maybe it's every 12 years. Is that aligned with a two, six-year term of every planning commission member, right? You, you, you pick, you pick a number and say every X number of years, we're going to, we're going to take a review of the zoning, right? And it's not as, not a review like we're rewriting this, hit this process, this, you know, two to and, but I have a long spin, right, that we've been thinking about doing this. But it's a process where we just refresh it and we just refresh on what are our priorities for Bowling Green Development for the next five, for the next. And then that becomes constantly updated cornerstone documents. We're getting into the point where that was something that I was, council would want to, you know, weigh in on it, set up. But certainly in other areas that I'm familiar with, you, you don't, you don't bake the future today. You, you just set up the framework and you make.
I think the response to the question that came up, if, if we were to go with what Will is suggesting, when we had the description of the zones, he would change that description from what reads there now. Now it talks about a mix of lot sizes and uses to provide nearby residents.
Right.
So you, you change that language to include residents within the, within the NC zone. It's kind of a fine distinction there, but I noticed the, you know, the PR district, it's clear that they're talking about residents who live in the PR district.
Do you add language that encourages that to be rezoned to a PR someday? Or we talk about leaving it the same? I guess that's.
So for me, to be frank, I have all these properties in my head, like along this, this whole section where I'm not sitting here like, boy, I wish those were houses. Right? Right? I'm, I'm sure some of them could be in the future and that'd be great. But others could preserve some semblance of what they are to, I'm hesitant to specify specific properties, right? That seems weird in this form. But I can think of intersections, et cetera, where I think of an existing industrial or commercial use. And I look at it and that could be really cool if, if it was just, if that was a mixed use building, right? And it would actually fit in with the neighborhood around it. Um, it would just kind of sit there and be a bit of a nice. What we're doing otherwise is locking in that that building is going to have some use similar to what it, and that's not the worst thing. But if I live near it, and I do, I would think to myself, hey, that'd be really cool if, if, if there was the option 10 years from now for someone to come in and turn that into a really cool building.
I'd just like to comment real quick on Will's sort of vision and conceptually. And I said it last week, I think that flexibility is, is really important for us. You know, who knows what trends happen in the next five or 10 or 15 years? And they've changed a lot since I've lived in Bowling Green. And where I think we've hurt ourselves in the last 10 or 15 years, development wise, is not having flexibility. And so, you know, when I think about creating flexibility with this draft, you know, I'm fine with changing some areas from maybe NC to PR. But I think having a bunch of conditional uses as an option really make a lot of sense to me. You know, it's not the end all, it's not permitted automatic. It still has to go through a process where we have somebody or some people that are looking at that and proving, and approving it. To me, that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, I would agree with you, Mark.
Well, it seems like the majority sentiment is to go with the approach of flexibility and including within the neighborhood commercial zone, the possibility that some of those properties could be turned into residential spaces over time. But should, do you want to vote on the two options or is that, is that an accurate consensus? Tom, I haven't heard from you. Eric, I haven't heard from you. As opposed to taking the NC zone, the Maple Buttonwood area and making it PR? Which, what do you prefer? What do you think?
I think it's a pretty interesting concept. I'm not opposed to it. I guess I'd like to ask Heather, are there any downside to this? Hate to put you on the spot.
Yeah, you kind of are, so.
You live this every day.
Yeah, I mean, I honestly, I am just worried about the neighborhoods that exist. We've heard a lot from the neighbors. And I just feel like NC is a really heavy commercial use to have it plopped in the middle of the neighborhood. Do I understand it's there now? Yes. But again, we're trying to really focus on quality of life. And I think small, low-scale commercial makes sense. And that's been the focus of the PR residential and why that was meant to be really a tool. So I do get a little uncomfortable when we talk neighborhood commercial when it comes to these two particular areas I think we're focusing on. But again, I, I live here, I work here, and you all though are representing the commission.
Throw this out just to ask, could we do both? Turn that particular NC zone into PR, but also take the more flexible approach when we're going through the neighborhood commercial zone permitted uses?
The commission can do what you would like.
And it's only a recommendation, so.
Yeah, I think my, my concern is, is so I, I do, I do actually, I disagree with that just because that you're locking in those, the character of those properties as, as to what they, it's, it's a, it's, hey, it used to be industrial or slash commercial. And so it's gonna be. And what I'm suggesting is we should create space for in the future that those become residential or commercial slash residential. I think my perspective would be if I'm a resident in those areas, and, and I am, I, that I would rather it be commercial slash residential than just commercial. And if it turned residential, great. So I, I, I think that we're otherwise going to make sure that if it's commercial today, it's commercial tomorrow. And that's not the worst thing in the world.
I don't, I don't see where what I said is contradictory to what you're saying.
Yeah, I don't either.
As I'm saying.
I was, I was just wanting to have.
Well, and I don't like this perspective of we're locked into the zoning code for the next 50 years. That's not true. It's a living and breathing document, just like any ordinance in the city. So I just want to make sure we're not focused that this is, you know, forever, you know, it's, it's not, so.
Yeah, yeah. So I can have a couple of points here. You know, if we go to the seven BG principles, which I did spend considerable time reading those documents, one of the, in, one of the first points, highly livable urban form which creates and preserves community. That's the number one BG principle. And the number one point in that principle is centers walk to bike to convenience. I thought when I was reading it, they mean downtown. But it's not downtown because downtown is second point, strong downtown centers. So which essentially this means is somewhat having other centers develop within the city. Not just everybody's focus on the downtown part of things. And I think that the NC in current form could be that. For example, when we talk about like, I think we're a little bit stuck to the certain idea of what mixed land uses, which is buildings, businesses in the base, in the ground floor and then living space in the first floor and in, in the top floor. And I think that could be it. But certain commercial places could turn out into be very fabulous places like creative spaces, right? So it could be a creative commune. You have a huge warehouse which has not been used. It could become a creative commune in which, like, you know, create artists can come and work and people can walk to that place. And, and that could totally connect because one of the, also the principle is to have creative spaces in BG. And, you know, like there are BGSC students, there's a very strong humanities and arts background. And we could attract and make them live here. And if we have these kind of places which are converted, that could be another way of thinking through it, right? So it's not that there's an old building and it has to turn down and it has to become modern and it has to be having businesses down and living space up. No, I think there could be certain different approaches to the already existing space. And I think if we fundamentally, because that's the second part of, and I think one of the things which has resonated in all the documents is there's a sense of pride toward BGs. And the sense of pride is old houses, walkability, connection to the community. And if we kind of reimagine the space, I think we may also make it all about business and forget that a lot of these things are not efficient. Like the old house is not efficient. I, I mean, I pay electricity bill, I know. So that's my other point. My, my interpret, my other issue is, is a little bit discussion between original versus, you know, interpretation of document. If you make everything very flexible, it again goes to this idea of signaling, right? When somebody looks at the zoning document, they know what is allowed, what is not allowed. And then they think they can, they fit into this process. When we make everything commercial, flexible, it certainly will create confusion and it also create mixed messaging, right? Let me go through the planning director, let me find things. And it also, and I'm in political science, I have to throw it there, there's a reason why governments are, are inefficient, right? Because we want to be equal and equitable. So there, if we have everything, there is a possibility of institutional issues of favoritism, nepotism, information asymmetry and all that kind of stuff, which is not good for functioning of a government efficiently. And hence, we need to have a strong document which indicates, but we can of course, in five or 10 years, change it. But I, I think too much flexibility in a, in a But I, I think too much flexibility in a, in a document which is widely circulated, which kind of imagined the city for 10 to 15 years is not really that great idea to me. I mean, you know, I can also give example of US constitution. I mean, you know, 200 years ago, they wrote it. I mean, they're going back to that same thing again. So I, I think documents do have a, have a strong role here.
Okay. Well, where does that all leave us?
Let's go back to the original.
I think we can take a vote whether we want to convert this into certain properties into NC or not. Or we could, you know, we kind of stick, we can take a vote whether we want NC to stay the way it is. I mean, we could go several ways from it, from here.
Like I am, I'm just stuck between, um, like all of the comments from the neighbors that really bothers me. It, it like that this zone was picked. And that this can happen when we clearly, our goal is walkability. Getting people to have businesses and intermixing with neighbors. And this community seems like they're already walkable, they're already doing what our goal is set to do. So I don't know that making it a PR versus NC is really, I think we need to focus on. These, these are the people that came, they're the only people who came to talk to us about these changes. I think that says a lot too. And it's from the same neighborhood. So we need to try to figure out how we can help them and become more flexible with that first. And then try to realize what are, where are, are there other areas that we really could focus on trying this? It seems, and I don't know all the specifics, but I gather from all the notes and all of the comments that there is a business in this town and it's not working out very well. So if we want to talk about how people have tried it. I think it is being tried in this, in this small neighborhood. And I'm not saying that it's never going to work in this neighborhood. I'm not saying that, but I'm just saying we have the opportunity to be able to listen to all of their comments and, and listen to what they're trying to say. Is it really that far fetched? Just if we could find another area to really try this? To really try the NC? Or is there? Can we exclude certain parts of that area and just leave that the way it is? So I, that's, that's what I'm trying to figure out. I mean, I get the, I get the NC, I get the PR districts, I get all of them. I understand that there was a lot of work geographically done to, to, to get the areas labeled as they are. But I also understand that we are a small town, we are a town that, you know, pretty much has people who've been here for a really long time. Coming up and giving us comments about stuff that kind of, if it works, you know, if it's not broken, why fix it? If it's, I mean, and we, we've all been a part of the committee where we put together the site plan. We want bikes, we want walkable, we want all of the things that seem to already be happening in this neighborhood. So what's the goal of changing it? Adding all of these restrictions, putting like, and the flexibility, I'm with you, Abhishek. I mean, if we allow all this flexibility, then you're right. What if it's not Heather? Heather's an amazing, amazing planning director. We didn't always have that. So what happens when she retired? And then someone's getting flexibility and they're getting special treatment or they're, you know, we have to put these codes in, that's what our job is. Our job is to present these to the city council as, yeah, fine, okay, flexible, but what flexibilities are we talking about? Um, we have to give them codes and like Judy said, I mean, there's a zoning board for that. If they want to rezone, I had to apply for a variance when I moved into my house. So you go to the zoning board and you apply, but we really should have the rules put in place.
I think we can approach it with the uses, keeping that in mind and, and all good comments and, and, um, yeah, work through the uses. And then, um, if there's space, once we determine those uses that we want to change, then we maybe do that as the second step to recommend. Any changes?
Yeah, I would agree. I would, I would, I would vote with Nate on that.
So you're suggesting that we go through the uses as we just were started to do with the definitions that we've got currently.
Yes.
And not change the mindset.
Yes.
Well.
For now.
For now.
I guess for now, and then we go, and then maybe that will help us flesh out the mindset as well and how much we're really adding or not adding.
I think that's what happens. Yeah, you have a lot of conditional uses.
You've got.
Have very few and you just have a few permitted uses. You're saying the mindset is we're going to be a little strict.
Yeah.
Right? And I think that flushes out.
And I don't think, I don't think we're really strict. I know, I see all these people come before the zoning board and we're very. Yeah, yeah, we're a bunch of pushovers, but we really think about, we know what's doing, so.
I don't know, it was on the board when I was up there.
You know, I think it's worth commenting, I mean, in, in the PR district and like in, in an NC or your zone or NC district or whatever. In any of the permitted or even conditional uses. An individual or individuals have to make a conscious decision based on market data, on whether they've even opened a business. And so just because I could potentially open a bookstore on Grove Street doesn't mean that I ever would if it doesn't make sense. Um, you know, and those are the individuals that have the expertise and the knowledge to make those decisions. Mark Remus doesn't or Judy Ennis doesn't, for the most part, they do.
Exactly, exactly. We're not giving enough credit to the business people that they're not, you know, oh, I can go in this here, this neighborhood.
The opportunity for them, if we say there's no chance you could ever do that.
Yeah.
If things make sense for them to do that, then we should be open to them.
Yeah.
Well, I'm back to.
I think we're gonna go through with this.
Go through the use table on the neighborhood commercial zone and see what, you would turn, you know, see how it comes out.
Sounds good.
Okay.
All right. Anything on the first page that you want to change?
Just, just out of curiosity, why is, uh, Autobahn Refueling Station Lodge not permitted in NC? If there's a large size there. It could be a.
Be the definition of large versus small.
I think from what I remember, um, again, this has been discussed a long time. Was, um, some concerns of a truck stop in certain areas and really that, I believe that was part of it. Um, can go back and look at the definition if that helps us, um, figure that out.
And it says it has to be over two acres as well.
That's, that's why truck stop is.
A question there too, like why wouldn't we make that conditional? But I mean, if it's, has to be that big, then it doesn't make sense.
Well, the it wouldn't be that many that would potentially fit, but there's definitely some two acre spaces that are.
There are.
It depends on where. Really not anywhere near any.
Residential, yeah.
I can see, I could see that being conditional.
I could do.
I can too.
I could do, it makes more sense.
And on the corner of Newton and Main Street. There's, there's plenty of properties that are two acres and something like that could fit them.
And I think they should be conditional.
Okay, let's, um, I make a motion that we can, that we vote on whether to make the automobile refueling station large a conditional use.
I'll second that.
Hey, uh, Jamie, you want to call the roll?
No.
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, pass it seven to two. Let's go to the next page then. All right, I've got one here, bar or tavern, I would change it from P to C. Any thoughts?
Why would you change it?
Yeah.
You see?
Uh, I think there are NC areas where you wouldn't want a bar.
Yeah.
Rather than just outright approved in any such area. I'd make it conditional. I think bars get to be very sensitive areas, what you allow and don't allow. And the blanket approval that is encompassed within the P definition is, um, worries me when we're talking about bars or taverns.
The, the point there is, yeah, there's, there's one. Well, it's a couple of smalls, but yet it, north and south of downtown obviously is not a problem. It's the, it's everything that butts right up to the, uh, VR district.
But in PR district, we have it C.
Conditional.
Yeah. District itself, we have C.
Yeah.
In commercial, we are saying it's not permitted. Like, you know.
So that would make sense to be at least.
But yeah, I was gonna say, you want to be the same, you want to have a consistent, I would assume.
Yeah.
I would just be careful, like right now, this is the same as general commercial and I just feel like if we get all these conditional uses, that's going to make it really tough. You, you say you want flexibility, but then you're putting a lot of conditional uses. I just given a heat of warning there. Especially on north and south Main Street. I mean, if you go back and change the map, that's one thing. But again, if you picture where general commercial is now. You're going to have a bar tavern already there that's permitted. So it just creates another layer of, you want to have, in basic zoning, you want to allow, you have to allow every use somewhere, right? That's, that's basic 101 law. You can't not permit a tattoo shop because you don't like it. That's, I mean, you have to have a spot for everything. And so I just want us to be cautious of moving forward of where that's permitted and where it's conditional. And I probably am not doing a good job like Nolan would, but, um, I just don't want to take all these steps backwards when again, north and not south Main Street are basically all general commercial and that's where you could put a business. Because in the hierarchy, that makes the most sense where you would have the general commercial uses. And then when you take a step back and you have another zoning layer, that's a different category or, or district that you want that to be conditional, because there's a reason why you want that really controlled more. But if you're okay with it on main and, you know, Main Street or Worcester, that that stays permitted.
Yeah, I get that. It's that goes back to our original discussion almost, because that's north and south Main Street makes perfect sense. But you just plop in a bar, that's gonna make unhappy people. No, it's just straight permitted.
I get it and I'm not promoting that NCB there personally, but that's, that's up to you all.
Okay, well, I'll, I will make a motion that we change that P to a C for the bar tavern in the NC, uh, zone.
I'll second it.
Hey, uh, Jamie, want to call the roll?
No.
Yes.
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 No.
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 Yes.
Okay, the motion fails five to four, or four to five, however you want to look at it. So it stays as a P. Anything else on that page?
Is, is there, is there any, um, loss or value in including bed and breakfast in as conditional use? In neighborhood commercial?
I think that's a good idea.
You have any thoughts, Heather?
Well, I'm glad you asked. Um, so I think if you look ahead to hotel, that essentially would be allowed if that's a hotel. There's just that subtle difference of commercial versus bed and breakfast is really designed for, um, a residential neighborhood to have a bed and breakfast, an old house on Worcester or in a neighborhood. So that would be the subtle difference.
So there's like a potential competition.
Uh, I think bed and breakfast was just designed to be within a neighborhood to allow that use if the owner lives there.
Rules for bed and breakfast coming up that.
Right.
How about a conference center if we're allowing, uh, automobile refueling center large? So I don't know what the definition of the conference center is here, but they could be a conference center, the property sizes there.
I do think the, there is a, the, the expectation that if we had a conference, what I think of as a conference center would be in the gateway district. But that's what the city is looking for. Something closely associated with the nearby of the university. And, uh, that that particular district encompasses that. I think that's what, you know, the city and the university hopes will happen someday, that somebody will step forward with the money to make that kind of investment. Maybe have a hotel and conference center, but in that gateway district between Enterprise and Thurston. So I, I don't, I'm, I'm not trying to just shut it down, but I don't, I don't see that as a, a good use.
Yeah, I, I do remember at BG SU, there was a discussion with the.
Okay, so Heather, would you be inclined to not have a bed and breakfast as a permitted use in the NC zone?
I personally don't think it's necessary. If you allow a hotel, if that's your inclination to allow hotels, then.
Okay. Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Yeah.
She was talking about bed break.
Okay, so we're done with page 42.
Can, can I ask real quick?
Yeah.
Is, is there a reason that corner store would not be allowed in neighborhood commercial? I mean, when I read the definition, it certainly seems like it's, it could be on an intersection and it sells.
Yeah, I don't see why not. I think Nolan added it later as, um, a good use for the PR. And it seemed like where.
Directly.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Say that again.
I was just saying, it seems to fit more in the PR district directly with the definition, but that doesn't mean, that doesn't mean it can't be in the NC.
Yeah, I mean, but if somebody, you know, wants to put a corner store at the corner of Main Street and Newton Road. I don't know why conditionally we wouldn't.
Is it the definition of corner store versus a convenience store?
Well, the difference with this one.
Size restrictions on the corner store because it's dedicated to the neighborhood or the PR.
Right.
Because there's such tight restrictions on it, but that's what constitutes a corner store versus, you know, if we're the same plot you're talking about, that's already, you know, allowable for a convenience store.
Right, so. Exactly. It was designed for the PR district and page 54 lists the limited uses and the size. So I mean, it's not, I mean, it's kind of the same thing. You already allow retail sales and services, so that would fit corner store too.
But here's the problem, right? There is NC, which is just next to PR.
Right.
So that makes it, there is no clear cut line, this is NC and this is PR. Because there are properties which are next door to N, uh, to, uh, to PR. So in that case, there could be a corner store in PR and not in. Right. So, and I think in the way I'm interpreting NC is like, if we push more and commercially in NC and be more, you know, more enterprising with things, that will put less pressure on PR for businesses. And keep PR for really relevant business to that PR, which is what walkability and things which are connected to PR, right? Rather than having, uh, uh, refueling station in PR, just because it could. So if we are more flexible, more, if we kind of think it more commercial in NC, it would, and there are no clear cut boundaries to it. It would pretty much help the PR to remain residential and that need for walkability could be done by NC. Because I guess one could walk from NC to PR.
I mean, if you read corner store again, it was designed for PR, very limiting. So that was the whole purpose of why corner store was added to specific uses and the definition was added. And then it was added to PR. So, and again, the map says it now, but it doesn't have to say what you're referring to now, it can be changed.
Right. But I mean, again, we're kind of giving a discretion. We are believing that the business is going to make that rational choice themselves, right? That we are giving them that they could decide what the market is for them is. And if that is true.
And the code's also saying that they don't want a 4,000 square foot corner store in the PR district. That was the whole point of the corner store to limit that size. So exactly, so like the North Grove carryout was, that was, I believe, the purpose of that.
And to think it through, if you have a spot that is, that is neighborhood commercial, but would be perfect for a corner store in a pedestrian residential. And it's right surrounded by a pedestrian residential. You're gonna want to change the zoning on that pedestrian residential. you're gonna try to change the zoning on that pedestrian residential, but in your corner store.
To me, we're splitting hairs a little bit. So if you're zoned NC, you can still have commercial. You don't have, it doesn't have to be called a corner store. You know what I mean? If your retail sales and services are allowed, it's the same thing.
So you're saying there's flexibility in defining that business?
Exactly. If we look at the table and it's set, and I wanna put a three thousand square foot convenience store, it's right there. You're allowed to have retail sales and service. I don't think you need to add that because there's no limits on the retail sales and service use. It's not listed in specific uses. Corner store is.
So corner store was created for PR.
Correct.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I'm, I'm not inclined to put that up for a vote. Well, I'm telling you.
No, but I think before we go any further, I think, um, I don't, we're not all on the same page clearly. Um, with PR and NC, we really have to figure out before going through all of these conditional non, you know. We have to, like, I think a group of us are looking at the bigger outskirts of town. And I'm still on the neighborhood. I'm still on that neighborhood saying to myself, no, I don't want this there. No, I don't want that there. So I think, uh, look at the map for a minute and try to figure out if we could. So you want to give three groups?
I still think.
I know.
Proposed.
So do you see what I mean? Like, I think, I definitely don't agree with, I mean, it, it really bothers me, this Maple Street thing, having all of this stuff, being able to go on that street or to be, go in that neighborhood. And that's what I'm trying to vote on. Like, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, cuz there's a big difference between.
There's a huge difference.
There, yeah.
Correct. And so why? I would feel more comfortable if we took it out of that, the small neighborhoods. And then I would be like, yes, put a large gas station. Yes, do this. Yes, do that. A bar, do whatever, in these outskirts of, of the street. It's just, it's, they're too different. The neighborhoods are too different. And I get that we're trying to, try to get on the same page. We're trying to, but we're really not. I mean, Maple Street is not the same as past Route Six or off Route Six or, but yeah, we're trying to vote on things that would say yes, they, if it was gonna be out here by Walmart, it can also be on Maple Street.
Well, you're not voting on the map right now. You're, you're talking about the use table. I know what you're thinking, but I think.
The PR, but they're, they're labeled the same, yeah, they're.
You subdivide the zone? I made neighborhood commercial one and two, two being our, our ones that are buried in neighborhoods that have more restrictions on them. And that will leave out the north and south areas that can leave us open to much less restriction for commercial standpoint.
That's what I'm saying. Yes. So, yes.
It's probably not exactly.
It's the same as the PR, though. That's what I'm trying to say. The PR has those specific parameters and allows the small commercial. If you keep it the way it is, or what you voted on last week, that can still be the same tool rather than adding another district or zone.
We're also gonna talk about other limitations in PR zone. It's not like we're done with limitations in the PR zone.
Yeah, you saw the whole.
About things like noise control hours of operation.
Section.
Also limit on the number of businesses.
Yeah.
I suppose.
Prop up our business density.
I think, you know, we've got that topic on our agenda tonight. I think we should keep going through the use table here for the NC zone and get that done.
And we have to be realistic too about the things that we're suggesting, like a large gas station. Yes, it's, well, I think, whatever we do on that, it's, it's conditional.
Conditional.
Point is, it's never gonna happen. It's gotta be so many acres and it's not gonna happen within the PR. Or right, right next door.
I have a two point five acre property. It could happen.
Okay. Never is a strong.
Does it make sense by that? Does it make sense for that to be a large?
But it hasn't yet. It's already zoned.
It used to be.
It's a commercial there now.
What?
It's zoned commercial there right now and it hasn't happened. I, but it's already commercial now, right?
If I sell it, based on these rules, we could put a large gas station right there. You know what I'm saying?
Conditionally, yes.
Yes, that's what I'm saying. I'm saying that it's possible, based on what we're saying, put this kind of stuff off Maple Street and your neighborhood, that your children.
I think the large, we proved it as conditional. If somebody wants to put a large automobile refueling station on, in that area you're talking about, I think Heather probably just says no.
But then you get back to what he was saying. I mean, aren't we supposed to put these, like, codes in, like, firm? Because what if it's not out there and somebody says, heck, yes, that's my golfing buddy? Or?
But I, I think we could have in the, in the, in the use, in more description, that it should not be around sort of neighborhoods, or we could put in some kind of neighborhood around it, has a vote in the process of it. I mean, which is, it, it can become complicated, I know. But I think that, that, you know, so say, somebody can put, um, I, I mean, I think largely we have to kind of start from somewhere, right? Like, otherwise, everything is, but we could say in the condition of having a large automobile gas station is that it cannot be around a neighborhood. It should have a clear path of, for, for trucks to go and leave and stuff like that, which will essentially make this area not usable and kind of get to the other area. So we could tighten more restrictions in the descriptions. And kind of think it in more holistic that way rather than blanket yes and blanket no. That's what I was, the way I'm approaching it, like, it's commercial. And.
But maybe for the point of this exercise, we, when we talk about neighborhood commercial, we're kind of focusing on the northern and southern ends of town, what they could be. And, and adding restrictions later to smaller areas.
I don't feel comfortable voting on all of this stuff because I had, I'm thinking of putting it on Maple and your guys said you're doing it north and south of town. Great. But you're right, I think. But again, I mean, there are restrictions on there now, but half acre. I mean, some of you guys, like you said, haven't driven around. You don't know how deep those lots are. I mean, it's possible with the restrictions that we have now. So I think they definitely, when we're talking about Maple, when we're talking about downtown, those areas that are zoned or labeled that way, that we need to make sure that the restrictions are more than what they are now. Like, two and a half, I'm not kidding, half acre, I could sell tomorrow.
So I personally think, again, the map is a whole other conversation that's not on the outline. And it needs to happen at some point, but I think for process. I know, I get where you're at, but we can't talk like the map is set in stone because it's not. So I feel like you need to focus on the use table and think, you know, there's all these tools. Let's look at it as tools. These are all tools.
Right.
And then where do you wanna apply these tools when you talk about the map?
The demographic is so different.
You know, we have to start, we have to do one side or the other.
Right.
To move forward. So if we, I mean, if we start with definitions, then we're gonna be thinking, well, what about all these uses don't fit? Either way, gotta keep, yeah.
Because I would vote yes on a lot of the stuff on the north and south end of town, but not on, like, the areas.
Sounds to me like then you should argue later on, perhaps, knowing that situation given on that map is something, should be something different.
Correct.
Or you should be, be arguing for various limitations above and beyond what we have now.
Right.
Regarding to things like hours of opera.
Right.
But I think that's how we address.
Yeah, because hours of operation would immediately.
You put in eight to five and you get rid of the gas station real quick.
Correct.
So this, that's.
So that's what I'm hoping we'll go back to, like that.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right, let's keep going with the neighborhood commercial zone permitted uses. I think we're through with page forty-two.
We're on forty-three.
We're on forty-three.
Should hotel.
Yeah, we were just talking about.
Yeah. We, we talked about hotel being a permitted use. Conditional or permitted?
Would, I'm, I'm just gonna assume we can go with permitted if it's gonna be big enough.
Yeah, I would too.
I was gonna see what, uh, out of curiosity.
It doesn't get that detailed.
Yeah. We could put it in as permissible use, but we just have to, you know.
Go back and look at the definition later.
Yeah.
Yeah.
My question for us going forward, when we look at these permitted, used, the uses, um, how detailed are we gonna get in our recommendation? Or is this just gonna be a, hey, city council, go look at the size of that in conjunction with permitted use and small neighborhood commercial? You know, how specific are we redrafting this whole thing? That's gonna be a bear.
Yeah. We'll be doing this for.
We'll be doing this for a lot longer.
Yeah.
I think we're going back to, this is just my opinion, I think, for less confusion, let's not call it neighborhood commercial. Cuz if you're, I mean, I ju, I just feel like it truly is commercial. And if you're gonna consider that map later on, you may wanna think of removing the neighborhoods. I'm just throwing it out there because it's something that I feel like it's caused a lot of confusion, really wasn't meant to be.
Yeah.
That way, um.
It's one of the things that I had on my list of stuff that I wanted to get to eventually. And Heather and I have talked about this on the phone a little bit too, that this, it's just a misnomer. It's not, as soon as you hear that word neighborhood, you're thinking about places like the area where I live. And that's not the NC zone. Uh, it's not, doesn't meet the description or the definition of the NC zone. Word neighborhood just implies something far different than what the NC zone is.
One other thing I was thinking of, do we have the number of how many properties are residential around NC?
Not that level of detail, no.
I, I think we kinda have to think about that a little bit too, because, I mean, so we're still talking about PR and NC, but there is NC next to R1. Right?
Right.
So, um, so, I mean, there, that, that is also the level of, so if we kind of know how many, and to me, the, again, the question really comes back is that people who are living next to NC knew that it was commercial when they bought it. Right? So there is some amount of understanding that this is commercial, but it probably shouldn't ever be a, a truck stop, right? You know, but in the end, we are affecting people's life and, and it's just not the PR NC issue. It is R1 and then, and NC issue as well. But if we restrict NC, then we are also restricting commercial growth. And we do need jobs and commercial growth.
Yes, we do.
Well, like, right now, general commercial allows hotels, period. I mean, if they meet the bulk of DNC requirements, the use requirement, screening, anything else, then that's a permitted use and it's approved. So, and again, that was my point of telling you really, commercial is commercial, or the NC really is, is commercial today, is what it was meant to mimic, so.
Okay, well, let's do with, take care of hotels here. I think there's probably some pretty common agreement that they should either be a C or a P as opposed to not being allowed.
I'd move that they'd be a P.
Okay.
My second.
All right. Motion is that hotels be a P, permitted use in the neighborhood commercial zone. Jamie, call the roll, please.
Yes.
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 Okay, motion passes nine to zero. And we move on to page forty-four, I believe. There are obviously a number of permitted uses on this particular page. More and more permitted uses than things that aren't allowed. I'm just asking, I'm just curious, Heather, if you recall anything. Why would light industry not be allowed? Too noisy?
Um, really, that was the focus of the Innovation Employment District, which is pretty large.
Okay. No changes on, uh, page forty-four?
That's what I've flagged for consideration. I, I don't have a motion on this right now. The parking lot as permitted, that all over the place. It's, I was interesting compared to where otherwise away from parking requirements. So I just thought it was interesting conceptually to think about. I don't have a proposal to change it. I think it's probably fine. I just, I don't really know if I have my mind around that yet. Um, I just want to flag that.
Okay. Move on to page forty-five. Again, a lot of permitted uses in the neighborhood commercial zone on page forty-five. Everybody okay with that?
I'm okay with it.
Yeah.
Forty-six, the last page. And a fair number of, uh, permitted. Heather, is the same reasoning applied to warehouse, that that would be more in the innovation and employment?
Yes, yes, unless you decide otherwise.
Okay.
Good.
Good.
Yep.
All right.
Another things I was thinking about when I was reading those BG documents is like, there is no clear, um, kind of in the, in the using, maybe it can be interpreted like about creative spaces. It's like, you know, some kind of, of place where artists can work. You know, can, one thing which comes to my mind is like antique stores, but like, think of this as like different artists buy a space and work in their space and then they can sell art and stuff like that. Or like pottery and other things like that.
It's supposed to be on South Main.
I thought South Main School has that.
Not anymore.
Well, it did.
Yeah.
So I was kind of thinking that maybe we could explicitly, and I don't know the wordings for this, but we could have explicitly this thing because we do want to have a creative side and, you know, kind of people who have that to stay here and work and create that environment to, as one of the users. And I'm sure it can be worked around with the other, but I don't know if we can.
The Arts Council of Lake Erie West, uh, the one who established the South Main. Not from the cities. And, uh, that's where I started my, I was there along with a bunch of artists. It went, they were studios, they were, uh, administration there, you know, it was. So maybe we could call it something common.
Yeah. And I, like, I think though, the one in Toledo where you can go, I'm forgetting the name of it, and you can make things with your kids. Oh, and there was another one I went to in which, you know, some people don't have tools.
He has two of them in.
Yeah, something, something like that, right? You can go with your kids and you can make a stool, but you may not end up using it ever again, but.
Isn't that, is that not encompassed within artist, artisan manufacturing?
It could be. It could go into several categories.
And retail sales.
Right.
I think artisan manufacturing is like a gallery, but what you're talking about is actually going, learn, those are big classes and have an arts. Don't necessarily have to tell them, you're just using base.
Sounds like a commercial use, honestly.
Correct.
Yeah.
It also sounds to me like something that, if it's not encompassed in what we already have, Heather can make a decision about people that wanna have a business that's not in our table of uses based on how similar it is to things that are in the table of uses. And it seems, sounds to me like it's close enough to artisan manufacturing that I would think that, you know, it would be favorably viewed if somebody made such an application. Well, this is gonna get tougher, but, uh, or not any easier, but let's move on to the second item on our outline for tonight. Review and discuss possible limitations in the pedestrian residential district. Things that I had noted, uh, that I've seen people suggest are that, that in the pedestrian residential district, that the hours of operation be limited, the decibel levels or noise levels be limited, that perhaps businesses only be allowed on corner lots, that there be some limitation on how many businesses there can be in an area. How many, perhaps, how many businesses can be on a, on a block? I think now, if we. I think now, if we don't change the map, which I'm not saying we won't, but if the map doesn't get changed and we've got the map as it is, I think now we're trying to more or less directly address the most of the concerns that were brought forth at the last meeting by citizens that were there in that Maple, Buttonwood area as to how to protect them in an area where some businesses are allowed. So, are there, besides just the fact that there's limitations, that there's certain limitations already built in that there's permitted uses, do we want additional limitations, and what are they?
So would we approach this from the one fifty point three-three definitions and the uses and standards, or do we address this item by item in the use table and then look at each definition of what we've proposed to be either permitted or conditional use? You know, as like a blanket in the, in the district definition is, okay.
Eight to five only.
And then that applies to everything that we've done in the use table, you know what I mean? Or is it for the decibel level there, was that? See, I'm getting that. Where do we make those change?
I think if we have eight to five, then we passed a cafe or, you know, it won't work.
Exactly.
So I think it had.
If you have an eight to five hours of limitation, they are a restaurant.
Your corner store, your other, I don't know, whatever we've approved.
To me, it probably will be business by business. But that will go.
Well, with the sound being what it is, we have, there is a codified ordinance for decibel level already, right?
Correct, yes, it's not part of the zoning code.
That's not something we would throw any. That's not something we would add to it either, is it?
I think it might get a little messy, since we already have the ordinance in a different section and the police enforcement.
Section one fifty forty-three modifies the noise level for some.
Yeah, I remember that on the, because it was there on the.
Yes. Yes. Yeah.
Yeah.
Prevents them from having sound amplifiers and mics and things outdoors, yeah.
And that's on the.
Forty-seven through forty-eight, at the bottom, yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's on all those uses. That's where do we go through all those? And then, okay, keep in mind, what districts is this allowed in, and do we? Go through what hours.
It sounds like you might add a time restriction for outdoor.
Right.
Outdoor use, perhaps within the program, we're talking about pedestrian residential here. You know, like, you can have a cafe, you can have a restaurant, if you're gonna have outdoor use, tables, yada, yada, this, that, and the other thing. You know, ten PM, you know, maybe we add that. Because it can get out of hand if we let it, but still, you don't want to stymie someone hanging out outside during the middle of the summer. Just a thought. But I mean, because decibel level is a very, very difficult thing to measure. Very.
So, so Bob, you brought up multiple items that, should we try and take one at a time?
Can, I suggest we define business if we're gonna start numbering them and where they're at, what is the business? Because one of the residents had brought up about, you know, considering rental houses business. You know, I don't think, and I don't remember seeing anywhere here where we really do kind of say, okay, is that a commercial business? Or is that, I mean, residential use? Business versus use, it's, I, I'm having trouble wrapping around my head, my head around it as well. I think we need to be, you know, careful about stepping in that. If, you know, we're gonna have X amount of business and that can be run towards a rental, there are many, you know, are we?
No, I would argue that the specific rental where individuals are renting and living.
It's not a business.
Whether, whether they're renting there or whether they own it and occupy it.
Yeah.
They do the same thing.
Yeah.
They get up, they get in a car, they go to work, they come back. There's no, they're not transacting in a business, there's, there's not the public that comes in and out. That rental property is being used exactly the same, it's just by somebody that doesn't own it. That's my opinion.
Yeah.
That was Nolan's opinion.
Yeah, I would agree. It's not a business per se.
Yeah. Not in that location, it's not a business, absolutely not.
I, I just do want to mention one concern about the rental, and I think if we restrict the number of, and I know about sixty percent are rentals here in the town. I, you know, so a house next to me was a person, a family was living, just became a rental. And I was surprised because it's just they upgraded and everything. I think if we kind of restrict a little bit of, and we, I don't know what the exact number will be. But that could also take care of this issue of there's not enough housing here, because commercially it makes sense to have a rental than to have a family live. But in a rentals case, city loses money on a long-term basis. Because when a person lives, they work here, they pay, they go to grocery stores, they, they go and improve their houses and stuff like that. And so I think it would make sense and could take care of the issue of houses getting unproportionately converted into rentals because of different factors. And that could take care of that if we, it could, it could hit the board, one board, two boards with the same stone, if you will. If we consider rentals as businesses.
I don't think.
I don't either.
I don't.
I don't either.
I think limiting the number of rentals in the town is a whole nother conversation. I don't see how we tackle that. That's a quite.
Yeah.
There's a lot that goes into that. Not just what areas are residential. Areas, that's a, that's a nightmare.
Um, and there's plenty of rentals that are not students.
Right.
And there's a need for that, and if, if we limit that, and we say only for college students, it's discriminatory. It doesn't make sense.
And then we're in trouble with a fair housing.
One class of citizens and not everybody else. I don't agree. And mortgages are businesses for a bank, so I just.
So, yeah, I mean, my home could be a business.
Yeah, we have, we have issues with this in this town. You're right, you're absolutely right, but I don't think this is the place to solve that.
I, I do think that one of the, the game guiding principle of BG is having a community and community identity. And I will argue that rentals are not, can be, cannot so cohesively connect to that identity. For example, weeds growing, not taking care, and I don't think it's a, it's an issue with the renters. I think it's the issue with people who own the houses more so, because they're thinking it as a business. They're not thinking it as like, I want to, to, it's not essentially a social capital. I mean, you know, like, in the sense, so I think it kind of goes back to the, to the heart of what BG is and why everybody seems to be irked about the way rentals are being run. And, but I, I know it's not an easy thing to cater to, and probably we not be essentially able to do it completely, but I think we can reduce the damage or negative effects, as I call it, of, of the business.
Yeah, maybe, but there's other, there's other avenues to fix that, too, like home enforcement and. We can pass other laws in that respect. If the city wants to do that, and so there's, I don't know that the zoning code is where we want to get into. This can't be a rental or that can't be a rental, I, that's a nightmare.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we're talking about getting into things that are beyond what we can do.
Yeah.
We need to, and we also need to keep the process moving along, we're not trying to initiate something that's gonna take us, you know, a year and a half to decide. We want to get through this so that city council, who really makes the decisions, can have a good amount of time to deliberate and make their decisions well. So I don't, I don't want to elongate the process too much.
Well, let me add, city council has done some things that they're trying to be helpful with the rental registration program. And then later on, the self-certification program, and I, I think they are trying to address your concerns and others' concerns. And I will go back to Nolan's statement, which I think is very meaningful, when he said, are you treating the uses the same? Or are you treating the symptoms of that use? And so, you know, you can have a rental by you, that's, I have a rental by me that's beautiful, I love the family, I don't want them to ever move, but that's their choice, right? And so, we have no issues, but an owner occupied on our street can be a little messy. And just because they own it versus rent it, I think, just have to be very careful of that type of classification, so.
Well, owners can be a little messy, too.
That's my point, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
So I, I think we're segregating and I don't.
We see it all in our office, we see it all.
Yes, they can be. I live near some, frankly.
I think the problem we have where we are right now is we have on the outline, you know, potential limitations in the pedestrian residential district, but it's hard to, and we've heard some things that were suggested, but it's hard to pick anything that, that applies across the board in the pedestrian residential district. For example, one suggestion was that the hours of operation, I'll pick an easy one here, hours of operation, eight to five. Well, you've just eliminated several of the uses that we've said were permitted.
Right.
So, that, that sounds good in respect to some businesses, but does it work across the board? Probably not. Same, decibel levels are addressed in other ordinances. Corner lots only, I don't know what people think about that, but it, it is a limitation that was brought up. Nolan said it's something, I think Nolan said it's something for you to consider. Is that something we have an interest in or not?
So I, I would just comment, if I just go through the actual table, my recollection, I'd have to flip to, I think it's one fifty ninety-eight, where if it's a conditional use, the planning director has discretion to impose conditions.
Yeah.
There's not, we're talking about PR district. Unless we're really concerned about, I mean, so we've just been looking at the P, basically on the table, those are the ones who, they can move into the PR district, and there's not necessarily, I think, if I'm reading it correctly, there's not the opportunity to impose additional restrictions on it versus just whatever that business wants to do. But we're not talking about, say, for example, once we've talked about like bar tavern, well, we can, we can already impose restrictions on that. We're talking about a barber shop. Ooh, and you know, hey, fair enough, I mean, right, maybe, maybe a barber, actually, there might be a market for a barber that's open after work, right? Not during work, when I, okay, just being great. So there might be, there might be, I, I think, I'm just suggesting, there's actually less of a, this might be less of a concern than we're worried about to the extent that we're actually talking about conditional use any.
That's fair, to that end, it, it, okay, bar tavern, conditional use is in the pedestrian residential, right? If they apply, if someone applies to open a bar or tavern in pedestrian residential, then does the city have the authority to impose anything on that list? Like, we're talking about hours of operation, noise, that kind of thing, as a condition of approval, is that?
Right, right.
That is feasible.
Yes, yes.
Time.
Yes.
Am I wrong to say, I was thinking that even we can attach conditions to the P?
Absolutely. Well, yeah, you, under the special uses, right?
Mm-hmm.
So if, like, for instance, barber shop is there, it's permitted, but we could essentially add more conditions to the P so that we reduce the negative effects or address the concerns of the residents that things don't go out of control. And what this will help us is tomorrow, it also will give people a chance to look at what is going on, and then they can look at the zoning code and, and raise issues, and also, it will give the city also some guidance of like, hey, this is the zoning code, you knew this when you signed up for the business and you're not doing this. So I think to me, is tightening these conditions are essentially very important to make sure all the parties involved are aware of it, and there could be better implementation. And when we leave the gray shade, that's when the problems start to polarize.
So what zone around a business do you propose?
Like, we can start with PR.
So would that be every time there's a business, PR district, the whole PR district vote?
No, no, I'm not about the citizen engagement at this point.
Oh, okay.
I'm saying, like, in a document, say barber shop, and there's a definition of a barber shop, but there's also certain conditions of opening a barber shop in PR, and essentially not the same condition if you're opening in a, you know, IE or institutional. So you're kind of mindful that you are in a place which is residential, and when you're thinking of opening a barber shop, you can open this document and know that. And so you not invest hundreds of dollars thinking that everything was because the city wants business. The residents also know that the next door barber is not acting according to the zone code, and hence they can complain.
They will.
Okay, I'm not hearing any particular sentiment to impose any particular limitations across the board at this point.
Right.
Tell me if I'm wrong.
No, I think you're right.
Okay.
I think the point is, if a nine-five, right, a lot of.
Right.
We can change the definition of a barber shop.
And apply conditions.
Yes.
We want to go through, back through pedestrian residential and look at each one that's together, well, a peeb, right? The conditionals, or do we look at all of them?
I think we have to look at all of them.
Accessory dwelling unit, first on the list.
One more thing, and I just, I just circulated in the email about the parking spaces. And, and I know, I don't know if Nolan has got a chance to look at that. And we can discuss that later, but I think this is an important conversation at our point right now. I'm not convinced of not having parking space at all. And the research I have read seems to suggest to me, and I'm not talking, I'm talking about peer review, and I put in, put a quote here, it, it doesn't increase mobility. It's not, certainly if you don't have parking, people will start walking, it doesn't happen. It is negatively affecting the seniors, which we tend to have more in our neighborhood, and also it tends to affect people who are poor more, because, not that they, poor should, like, poor can have a car, but it's, who are more likely to be sick and disabled because of the nutrition level and exercise level and where they're living. So if you look at poverty, it's more around, you know, to eat healthy and stay healthy takes money. It's easier to buy a $2,000 car, but over a period of time, anyway, we don't want to get into debate of what cost budget, but that's not the point here. So I think if we have certain amount of parking spaces, it will reduce the, the pressure on street parking. It will reduce the pressure with the neighbors have to pay so to have the businesses in their neighborhood. Right? So there is a sacrifice which neighbors are making in a way to have a business in the neighborhood. Because they have to deal with the noise, potential new people coming, and also now there's a parking, and we want to reduce that negative effect to those neighbors, because they didn't sign up for this when they bought this house. Right? And that's my argument for NC, they knew that there's a commercial zone at backyard, they knew that, right? And hence, I am not convinced with the argument which Nolan is presenting, and I think we can debate this, and I'm not expert in this, but I think we need to have certain parking restrictions for the businesses if we're allowing them. We just can't say no parking. Or we find lots, or businesses combine and find lots in which they can park, so it doesn't have to be in their back, in their driveway, if they have a lot around it, so they can park, you know, so that's why in NC they were parking spaces. Because now they have a park that can walk to the business there. So.
You're pointing out, it looks like for artisan manufacturing, which we made that, I don't know, I'm just looking at, in the pedestrian residential, we suggested that change, that then if we have, when we look at that, we say, okay, maybe in the uses, but it's gotta have, but gotta have X number of parking spots for.
Yes, for all business, yes.
But you're also saying residential, oh, their park.
Yes.
Their driveways, garage, yes.
Yes, yes. No, I'm saying if there's a new business coming, business needs to have certain amount of parking, yeah. And I'm also in favor of having certain amount of vegetation and other things, but, you know, that native plants and stuff like that. That could also become a quality.
I'm gonna, I just want to clarify, so we have a different section, generally, generally applicable standards where we talk about the whole parking.
Yeah.
Restrictions, so I don't know if you're meaning that you want to focus on that, or are you just talking in the PR?
No, I was in, I was, I think the general section, if the way I read it, was more about housing.
It, it's a whole parking code.
For businesses as well?
Yes, mm-hmm. Right, that's where the requirement for bicycle parking was included, because that was a gap in our zoning code.
Right.
And again, that was about access of all people, whether you have a car or not can access a business, so.
You need to stop it.
So that's why I'm just trying to understand, I don't know if you're just talking about PR, if you're talking about parking all over the city, the requirements.
What I was talking about is more, little bit more stringent parking requirements for the PR.
Okay.
Because, again, commercial, but here, I don't want residents to pay the cost of having a business in their backyard. Because again, commercial, but here I don't want residents to pay the cost of having a business in their backyard, or in their next door neighborhood.
Here's what I'd like to do. Uh, I think that conversation is for another night.
Okay.
About parking requirements. Uh, given that we've been at it for about an hour and a half now, what I would like to do to try to finish out the night is go to Will's various suggestions and see how many of those we can dispose of this evening. I think that is something concrete we can handle, it's on the agenda for tonight. And I think that we can handle most of these. Let's start with the first one. Point oh four intent. Will had mine some more visionary language describing the intent of the document. What we got there is pretty mundane. Uh, on the other hand, this is not, this is not the biggest item on your list.
It's not the biggest item. I just thought maybe Abishak might like this, given the other comments about having a document that says who we are. It, it struck me that we're going through this whole process. We should at least say something nice about what we want the community to look like. But I would suggest we just kind of skip on this one.
I was gonna say, I think we have that in the land use plan. We talk about what we want the community to look like. Just copy that over there, Will.
Why don't, uh?
I'm indifferent unless anybody's strong on it.
Yeah.
I'm, I, I moved that we add my language and that I wrote here and you guys can vote it down. This, we can keep moving.
We're gonna dispose of you, Will.
Before you finish that motion, are you suggesting just right on the end, like at the end of the paragraph?
Yes.
Just continue with.
Yes.
And to promote Bowling Greens investment in building attractive, walkable and vibrant neighborhoods? Or something similar to that word?
I was suggesting that very language.
So let's be specific, please, for the record. So you're talking 150.04 intent. The very last, I guess we'd say phrase, cross off and, instead of and to promote the preservation of historic resources, we'll take out the and. Am I paraphrasing the motion right? And then move it to and at the end, to promote Bowling Greens investment in building attractive, walkable and vibrant neighborhoods.
That's, I thought that's what I heard.
That's the very long sentence we're gonna go with. Okay. Just making sure for the record.
Every English teacher in here is going to cringe.
I'm already cringing.
I'm cringing at that sentence, yes.
If you cringe at that, but not how it's drafted today, then you're not cringing at the right thing.
Okay, motion to approve that language.
I moved.
I'll second.
Well, Will already motioned, so Mark or Joe are seconding.
Okay.
I was seconding Will's original motion.
So we've got Mark, okay.
After the clarification of how it would be worded.
Okay.
All right, Jamie, please call the roll.
Yes.
No, I don't, I don't want to change, but I don't want this, this change. No.
No.
Yes.
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 You said that so willingly, man.
I think the motion passed six.
Totally a recommendation, right?
Clean up the English part of it.
Okay, the next, the historic overlay zone, and we're looking at 150.11. And Will was suggesting.
Let's say we skip it based on Nolan's comment.
Yeah, I will second that comment. We told Nolan it needed to be exactly what we painstakingly wrote a year and a half ago. So we did not want that touched. We didn't want, we want to still calibrate with 158.
Okay, so we are eliminating that suggestion. 150.18 is about vision clearance triangles.
So I will add to what Nolan said. The, the vision clearance triangle has existed since 1975. This does not change that. It adds the diagram, clarifies it. Um, so I don't know if that helps answer questions.
That's exactly what I was wondering. There's a couple of properties I should probably just complain to the city about. It sounds like.
That's why we're here, yes.
I, I did have a question because in my notes I said, what about farm crops? So there are a lot of intersections that I come to that they absolutely are inside of where they should be. Is that enforceable? Is, do they, do they count? Or do they, are they part of this?
We have had issues that we've dealt with. So if you see anything, let us know. Absolutely.
All right.
And I did have a follow-up here on the same one. Um, the, I had this come up in, um, my practice in a different village, but it doesn't, um, it's not really clear to me on the, where alleys come into play. I mean, the division clearances, it's not for unimproved or unpaved alleys. That concerns me a little bit. I don't know if that's worth talking about or not. I don't have an example off the top of my head, but I had some, I had that come up. So I wanted to bring that up, um, because it really mattered on a particular fence. I guess I just wanted, I don't know, I don't have any example. It'd be nice if they have, uh, to give you something that I could give specific, but, um.
So it's really a case by case basis and we work with public works because technically if it's public property versus private property, that makes a difference. So again, I hate to say it, but it depends.
Are you, are you, are you referencing that there are improved or paved alleys that this runs afoul of? Is that the idea?
Right, because, okay, a vision clearance triangle is present at all corners of intersecting streets, okay? Each vision clearance, blah, blah, two side, okay, so it, it's intersecting streets. No vision clearance is required, no vision clearance triangle is required for unimproved or unpaved alleys. What about paved or improved alleys?
With the street.
With an alley with a street.
Do we have alleys?
Doesn't seem to, but that's where the definition of streets and alleys is at issue because I don't think we have the definition, if I remember looking at this correctly, on alley or improved alley or unimproved, you following me? If you have an improved alley coming into a street, it's silent on.
Isn't alley a street?
Right, isn't approved alley, streets. I get to unimproved, private, that's so be it, but where it's improved or paved, unimproved or unpaved.
To my mind, part C there implies that the vision triangle does apply to improved alleys as they come into a street.
Yeah, but it says streets, it doesn't say alleys. It's in our alleys, streets. I don't think they're defined.
And a street right of way, because street does not appear to be defined unless I'm missing it. A street right of way does not include that.
Right.
Well, and streets are named, alleys are not named. Again, we do it with a case by case basis. Certainly there's a visibility issue, a safety concern. We're gonna handle it with whatever tools we have in our toolbox. And so I will say alleys we've dealt with before. Does it, do they come up a lot? No, because alleys are usually the very low traffic generators. So, um, I don't want to say it hasn't been an issue, but we have used that before.
I feel like we'll get pushback from somebody that says, well, it's not a street alley. I can put my eight foot fence up there.
Well, you can't do eight foot fence.
They can't do eight foot fences.
Right, right.
Whatever higher than it's supposed to.
Yeah.
Eight foot fence, but they're chickens. Right, we got it.
Now, listen, the zoning board would not allow that.
Do you have a proposal for it, just to make it less safe? Because right, right now, it's, I think it's open to interpretation, so we could just clarify.
You did, we need a definition of alley and I don't have it offhand, but.
But you'll get it to us.
What's that?
You'll get it to us.
I'm a thought guy. Um, let's see. Should it just say? In the, I've lost my spot. Should it just say, um, whatever it says, streets, I mean, intersecting streets or alley or alleys? And then you give exempt, you've exempted out, unimproved, unpaved, so then that would clearly be referring to paved or improved alley.
I would just be very concerned with regulating alleys. I mean, normally they're six foot, eight foot wide. You're taking people's property if we're not letting them, you know, eliminating a 25 feet and calling that a corner lot. We don't call, define those as corner lots right now. So I, that's, I'm just trying to think long-term and think out some examples. I mean, right now we have one clause in the code. It says traffic visibility intersection, so it's, it, you know, it's one paragraph. I think they went a little more in depth with it this time with the new zoning code, but it basically says, irrespective of any other provision of this chapter, no building or other structure, fence or planting of greater than two feet in height shall be erected or maintained in any district within the triangle. Two sides of wish shall commence at the corner of the corner lot and extend 25 feet away from the corner along each lot line and extend diagonally from the 25 foot point on one lot line to the 25 foot point on the other. Except that this provision is not applicable at intersections within the central business district controlled by traffic lights. So, um, that's what it says now.
I don't think we need to go further than what's here. It's not a, it's not a causing a big, big problem. You deal with it on a case by case basis when it comes up. My inclination would just be to leave it alone and move on. Unless somebody wants to make a contrary motion, we can make a motion and vote on it. Okay. Finding residential density, 150.19. I remember this one.
If, if it's helpful, Bob, I can run through these really quickly.
Okay.
Cause they're all, I mean, I remember what my points were in it. In 15019, B, there's just a reference in the first clause to major structural alterations and the second clause, there's not a reference to major structural alterations, but there is subsequently a reference to minor structural alterations. When you draft, there's a certain call and response that's missing. So I suggested we clarify or remove. Nolan said he recommends removing a phrase. So I can move to remove that phrase unless anyone has it.
The phrase that says that change use or undergo minor structural alteration.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, that's the.
So, so I move to recommend removal of the phrase that change use or undergo minor structural alterations.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay, so let's clarify. So under 150.19B.
Correct.
The last, very last phrase of that sentence.
You got it.
Yeah, that change use or undergo minor structural alterations. Okay, I'm just being clear for a record. Was there a second?
I, I second. Okay, Jamie.
Yes.
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 From nine to zero. Go ahead, Will.
I suggest skipping the next one. I had a curious question about balconies that Nolan addressed handily. So unless anyone has any further comment, I'll just move on.
Well, I'll just add that when we wrote the gateway district, balconies were in there and I believe Nolan just kept that same bulk and density format was really, it wasn't really, I think, any intent there. Besides, there was concern with maybe people doing weird things off balconies or, you know, jumping off that. I don't know. So I think that was the only reason it was there.
Next, in, in 15037, which is the gateway district provision. In 15037C3, I move to recommend correction of the typo in which development is misspelled.
We really need to vote on that, Heather? Can we just say by acclination? We've got a typo identified and we're gonna correct.
I mean, it doesn't hurt if we can do that. I know Nolan had it written down in his list of recommendations that he'll give us.
He said he has it written down in there, so.
Yeah, so I'll just, then I'll note for, as well.
For the record.
Same, same thing in the next, the next, in, in the, continuing on the paragraph in C4, there's a reference to structured parking, which is not a defined term. It appears nowhere else. I think they mean parking structure. Nolan agreed.
Parking, would it be parking structures? Plural?
Think in this case, C4.
Looks to me like parking structure. Or, or with the S in parentheses.
Yes, I think in parking structure parenthesis, S closed parenthesis would be.
Okay.
The recommended term.
I think.
I trust counsel to get that right. Uh, next one is actually, I think, a discussion point for us that, Bob, if you want to skip to address the other things, that's fine with me. But if not, we're talking about height restriction. Just philosophically.
Yeah, well, let's devote a few minutes to talking about height restrictions.
Uh, so I think just briefly, I, I speculated as to whether we were a community that needed height restrictions. That we were not an overdeveloped community and that we weren't gonna have, it, it felt unlikely to me that someone was gonna build a skyscraper in, at the corner of, you know, Thurman and Mandel, right? So that, and this kind of triggered the discussion. I think I'm aware generally of projects that in the past have maybe not been uh, as, as large or as successful as they might be because of height restrictions and wondered whether we needed to include that. Uh, and to the extent that we did include it, I thought broadly speaking, some of the inconsistencies in the height restrictions struck me as strange.
I know Nolan said that he, he said, I struggle with this question myself.
Yeah, this is one that I had noted as well that I don't see why we need height restriction. And most, there's no one notes, um, telephone towers and the like, none. Non-building uses, but otherwise I, I don't see why it'd be in.
You don't see why we need them?
Yeah, get rid of them.
And obviously I'm in agreement too. So I think it's.
Heather, what do you think?
Yeah, I think it's hurt some projects and, um, it's hurt some potential development in town too. And, um, you know, many of us have seen examples in other cities and several of us in this room went to Kent and saw a revitalization of downtown that didn't have the same restrictions that we do. And it did not hurt the downtown and the development. It was, uh, it did, it did a great job. So.
You're gonna ask me my opinion? Okay. So over the years of working here and hearing community feedback, um, well, first of all, safety issues. So making sure our ladder truck can reach buildings is important. That's why there are building code maximums and zoning code maximums. Obviously, we want to be able to service a fire. Um, and I, over the years, we've heard a lot about the beautiful courthouse and how people really pride themselves on that being our sense of identity and being able to see that. And so I know that's came up for several years, why, um, people wouldn't want to see that covered up with, you know, a 70 foot multifamily complex. So again, I'm just giving the opinion of, is Bowling Green in Chicago? You know, is that what it would end up being? Are we, you know, surgical about where those height increases are? Um, you know, if my house is 20 feet tall, do I really want a 40 foot house next to me? You know, just thinking about how light enters your home, how air enters your home. There, there's been a history to why there's height restrictions. So I'm just throwing out considerations. I'm not advocating one way or another, just over the years of hearing community feedback and concerns, that's, that's what's came up.
Is that a fairly common variance request?
No.
No.
No, uh, we had it, what, um, Home Two Suites wanted to be taller and have more floors. That didn't pass though.
No.
Um, but it was like a matter of maybe five feet. So, so very rare. That's the only one I can remember.
Seems like industrial.
Yeah, I would agree with you that Bowling Greens are very, I would say, um, I don't know if liberal is the right word, but I do think it accounts for, if you have an increase in setbacks, then you can go taller, which seems to make sense, right? If you're a, a, a large manufacturer like VTEC, that if you want to go taller, you're gonna have to set back further from your property lines.
I'm worried we're gonna, we're gonna miss out on projects that, that are economical with a fifth floor instead of a fourth. Like a two stone.
We don't regulate floors. We did that about eight years ago and we, and we eliminated the, the number of floors. So it just went to height.
Right, so, but, but there's some rough approximation between.
Just because you can do, you can get a variance. I mean, that's, I feel like, okay, if I gotta go to this town and I want to do this project or I can go to this town, one, I have to get a variance, one, I don't. You're going the other town. And I, I.
Cause there's no guarantee you get it.
Right, right. And I just don't see, maybe there's in particular zones or districts, there's something that we could look at more, but generally, I don't see the effect. We have a, we just got talking to death about how we have a walkable community. Go walk and see the Dagum courthouse. Wanna see it.
Clearly, um, uh, Heather, you mentioned that someone applied for variance to have a, a higher building and it was denied.
That was Home Two Suites. They wanted additional floors and then to exceed the height limit, maybe it was five feet. I don't remember the details, but it did not pass. But then, uh, maybe about a year later, we did eliminate the floor requirement, the maximum number of floors. So it's still built, obviously, and they still are at 60 foot tall, whatever that max. So it's still built obviously, and they still are at 60 foot tall, whatever that maximum was for that district. So. I can't speak for the zoning board. I don't remember.
No, I'm sorry. I don't.
I mean, it was a good question that how many variances have we had for height? That was the only one I can remember in my 14 years here of for height. There had, there's, that was the only one. So.
I, I think it's important and, and I do remember we, one of the things that we discussed was the safety factor, the ladders, can they get that high or, and I, I think that's something that a real concern.
What is the height max right now?
Do it in conjunction with a fire marshal.
It depends on the district.
Oh, it depends on, okay. I see. So it's different.
Development based on fire trucks forever? I mean, like, how other cities do it? How does any other city with a, I don't know, another 10 foot high, right?
Probably depends on egress and.
Yeah.
Fire, you know, fire suppression system. Yep. That would be. Yeah, I would think the consideration, how much.
So what you guys are proposing is to get rid of all of.
I hadn't proposed anything. I wanted to.
No, I just said a discussion. Generally not.
Okay.
Haven't proposed any.
Oh. Would you like?
I didn't think we were going to be specific with every single.
Right.
Line item of height restrictions tonight.
No.
But you wanted just a general conversation.
Yeah, conversation to get the conversation started. Why don't we go, go on? I will say, I, one thought that's running through my mind is that we don't have to have a vote on everything that we consider. We could pass this subject on to city council without having voted on it. But tell them that we had a discussion about height requirements and questioned whether height requirements were, were needed. And then let, let them decide what to do from there.
I'll, I'll just say firstly, I would prefer this issue specifically that we, I'm going to make a motion.
Give them some more specific instruction.
Yes.
Yes.
So I, I am, I don't want to kick that one down the road.
Okay. Well, I said, you know, if there's a motion in a second, then we vote on it.
Do you have some?
I wasn't ready to do that tonight.
Okay.
I, I am more than happy to do it at the next meeting, but, and you just said you wanted to generally talk about height restrictions. And I think it's a really important piece of this document and I'd prefer not to kick it down the road.
Okay. All right. Duly noted and we will consider it, it, more closely at our next meeting.
Yeah. And, and it's going to require a lot more discussion.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't fully discussed. Right.
Yeah, I think there's a lot more discussion to be had too. So.
Okay, go ahead, Will. Next one.
This is about the planning commission or, or planning director providing.
Yeah.
An opinion in writing.
Yeah, it seemed to me we want to avoid future confusion or he shut, can't say he said, he said correctly. Uh, if, if, if upon request, they had to put the opinion in writing. It seemed to me to be a reasonable ask, but I don't know if there's a reason not to have it.
Just one, I, one of the thing is, um, as, as an administrative, I kind of want to think that the planning director is also safe and secure to make that opinion in case if it gets challenged later. And I think that as protection is provided to the planning director. So if we put the, um, owner some prime, uh, pan director making a recommendation and tomorrow it goes to the court, um, you know, there should be certain amount of legal and other counsel that plan that can take before she or, uh, he makes that recommendation. So I just don't want to put that burden on the pan director without the support the pan director has in case of the motion get challenged in court later on.
So are you saying the writing is a, is a good idea or a bad idea?
Probably is a bad idea.
A bad idea. So I would suggest that it's much more likely to be litigated if it's not in writing. Because then subsequently when it's, if, if there's a hypothetical approval that somebody might get and a few years later, hypothetical neighbors might be upset about it, but hypothetically challenge certain interpretations. Not having something in writing, only having been verbally delivered information puts everyone in a bind. Instead of having it in writing, they can say, well, here it is. This is.
Maybe that's a question for the city attorney though too. We'll let them decide.
I would, I would hope the city attorney would weigh in on that. Yes.
If I put my city attorney hat on, which I'm not an attorney, um, I believe he would say your issuing of a zoning permit approval is what is the writing document or written document, I should say. But I can ask him.
Okay, let's do that. Ask Marsh what he thinks about that suggestion.
Uh, next 15041, I think we've actually addressed.
Couple of these.
Yeah.
Probably just skip these. If we haven't addressed them, we will. Actually, Bob, you addressed the inventory issue.
Yes.
That was helpful.
We've got a couple of those that the Nolan said, please discuss on seven 11. I think we can probably take care of those pretty quickly. Fraternity and sorority house add a permitted principal use to the institutional zone. So you're thinking of having fraternity and sorority houses on campus.
Cause I think, I think they're there now.
Yeah.
Right? If I'm remembering right. So I thought we should just.
Some of there, somewhere else.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Seems like an easy one to me that it ought to be permitted.
Yeah. Everyone agree by acclamation?
Awesome. Okay. Heather?
Wait, what'd you just do? Sorry.
Let's go ahead and vote, vote on that.
Okay.
So hold on a minute. So I mean, if you think about this a little bit though, okay, so state property is exempt from zoning.
Right.
Okay. So, but we have other institutional zoning districts other than right on BG SU campus. So I just want to be, you know, just think about that long-term, if that's what you want, but, um, okay. But you made a motion, Will?
I did make a motion. I said we should do it. Add a, add a permitted principal use of fraternity or sorority house to the institutional zone.
And Heather, you're saying that's governed by state law?
They're exempt from zoning state properties.
Pass it. It has no force on state owned land.
Technically correct.
Right. So why are we?
Open it up for city only.
Why are we doing this again?
Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah, why are we doing it?
Okay.
Well, without a second, I think the motion dies.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, hotel, we've already taken care of. Next one.
Uh, next one was parking lots. Uh, commenting that we may, we're making it very permissive to install a parking lot, maybe in tandem with dropping parking requirements elsewhere. And I was suggesting we might switch to a conditional principal use. I think of this really as I flagged before as a discussion item. I, I, I think I'm looking for the wisdom of others on this. And then Nolan commented, if you drop parking requirements, it's a difficult political cell to make parking lots conditional uses. So part of the rationale of dropping those requirements is that you give landowners the freedom of choice, the supply park or not. So I guess that confirms that when I said, maybe we're doing this because it's intended to be in tandem with dropping parking requi- guess that was right.
Yeah.
Okay. So I don't have any objection to that then, if the planning expert says that's the best way to do it.
Okay. Okay. The last one for restaurants was already taken care of. So we're moving on to 150.43.
Uh, yeah, first 1543G, uh, just commenting. Look, this might be how it is today. I just think the, that in-ground pools will need a, will need a fence.
If there's a question, we require fencing around in-ground pools now. So it's really the same.
Yeah.
Code for that.
Uh, next one might be one that people are interested in. 150.43, I propose to strike the second sentence of I. And that was the restriction on outdoor entertainment involving the sound of, the use of sound amplifying equipment.
Why do you want to strike that sentence?
This seems like a, uh, I understand what they're getting at, right? We're getting after loud noises. I appreciate that concern. So we have the noise ordinance and then anything that permits that. Saxophone, but doesn't let me use a small speaker seems like an odd voice. The point is the noise, right?
Right.
So we should, so from my perspective, we should regulate the noise and not.
How it's being made.
Yeah. Cause then you're just, you're, you're blessing certain types of noise prohibiting others. But then if you say, well, that's already covered because there's a noise or noise ordinance, then I would suggest to you that in fact, the problem is already addressed.
Just with this thing.
Correct.
Right. But you can have a band of sorts.
Right.
You shouldn't prohibit the tool. You should prohibit, prohibit is the wrong word. You should start regulating the tool. You should regulate the.
I mean, to me, again, a couple of things, right? How many times does a band comes and plays? Right? I mean, it's not happening every day. You can use a speaker every minute. So, I mean, that's not a fair comparison. Second, um, there are certain, there is a certain amount of say saxophone without, um, a speaker. I mean, it's not like, it's like a board, right? You can't regulate the board, but that's a pleasant sound. It's the sound of the nature. Whereas it can be pretty obnoxious to have a speaker and, you know, certain kind of musics because it doesn't match everybody taste. And, uh, and how many people really do play saxophones and know how to play saxophone, but everybody tends to have a speaker phone. Okay. Maybe one, I mean, online, I guess. The other issue is the burden of, on the, on the enforcement of these acts, right? So of course there's a noise ordinance, but not everybody follows that noise ordinance and there will be complaint and that public resource could go into more useful way than going to parties and shutting it down. Fifth point, ADUs are new. The people who are living there didn't sign up for it. Because we are again, that forced choice is now coming into the play and we are making them sacrifice on behalf of somebody could have, right? You know, so, um, I can go on and on about this. Um, um, so, and then finally clarity on the document, right? It's a signaling that noise is disturbance to people's daily lives. And hence we want to signal that rather than we can again, get into the complications or where the noise is coming from, who's producing it and stuff like that. It's fairly simple that the noise is a problem here. You just can't run it. And I think in most part, people are pretty, pretty reasonable when it comes to noises. I mean, I live next to two rental properties and they're college students. And I mean, I know, I mean, if one tends to be reasonable. So to me, um, if you are reasonable that to that sound to other people's privacy and the sense of comfort and they're in their private space. I don't think this to be an issue at all.
I, I just commented, I agree with a lot of what you said and what you talked about was noise. I, I mean, what we're talking about noise and we're not talking about the ways we make.
I think that this language came about as a result of the problems we've had with Arlen. And, uh, I think the residents in that area would look at this language as something, some, one small thing, at least we were able to do to address their problems and try to lessen their problem. And I am very hesitant to eliminate.
Me too.
Yeah.
But do we want to, I mean, do we want to encourage people?
What about everything that happens downtown?
But here's the thing, right? That goes again to the principle that downtown is commercial and people know it when they go into it. But when I'm in my house, I'm in my private space. And I have a right in my private space to feel that I don't have to listen to the elements. I don't want to listen to. But when I go to a restaurant, I have, I, when I, I make a choice to go to restaurant and I also give my freedom to listen to the music with the store or the, or the restaurant is playing. And hence I won't complain because I consciously made a choice to go to a place which will have loud music. But when I'm in my house, I'm not.
But again, you've just pointed out that the amplifier speakers, again, things that are on the outsides of at least one, not that I know of. Would that want to follow this? Call it grandfather, whatever you want, but you know, well, two, three different bars downtown that have exterior amplification. There's those, that and the other. Does this? Again, restrict them as well. Because their neighbors don't complain. That's rightfully so because that, you know, the talk about decibel level. Hard to measure, but have an ordinance. If we're not mistaken, neighbors over there by their own, by what I've heard, there are working and it's not perfect. He has applied, the point he's making is that we are saying, okay, no amplification, but we can set up a jazz bands to do it.
Yeah.
You know, because I think the neighbors' problems over there aren't really in a, a guitar or the, it's the actual people sitting in drinking and having, carrying on.
It does a lot of.
It's, it's, it's odd to me to suggest that we would say, cause I think if, if I don't have it right in front of me, the first sentence says outdoor entertainment. That's okay.
Right.
And so now what we're saying is outdoor entertainment is okay, but it depends on what kind of music or what kind of band, if you can't use a speaker. And if you say, no, we're regulating noise, then I would say, that's fine. That's a different ordinance. That's not this provision.
But I think this applies to the ADUs, right? At the noise level in the ADU. So I, I have a ADU, neighbor has an ADU next to me and I'm in my house. And I don't want the neighbor to play loud music.
Are you saying we're talking?
No, this is for any commercial.
Accessory use.
These are accessory use.
Accessories, no matter what.
It's not an accessory dwelling unit. They're talking about accessory uses.
This is anywhere.
All these uses in commercial, in commercial, in a commercial use.
And, and certainly, I mean, but since it, it's now out in the open. I mean, if we want to be responsive today to the first set of neighbors who come and say that we don't like particular business. I promise you at our next meeting, there's going to be the other set of neighbors, community members who say, we love this place. What are you doing? You know, there's very much a give and take here. I, I think we need to make rules that, that make the most sense for everyone and that I think on its page makes sense. And, and if we're going to regulate noise, we should do that by regulating noise. We should not put in things that let you play music outdoors, but can't use an amp. I, I mean, that, that, that seems.
So that's a very broad term analogy too. An amplifier isn't just a car amp, anything.
Right. And, and, and if, then you say to me, but that won't be a problem because though there, it can't be too loud. There's a noise ordinance and that is, yeah, exactly. That, that's the point.
So, and like Joe, you mentioned, uh, you're absolutely correct. We are, we have these.
We are, we have these patio.
So and like Joe, you mentioned, uh, you're absolutely correct. We are, we have these patio.